Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 20th, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting. Commissioner Beaumont has been kind enough to offer up the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. If everyone can stand, please.
Now I'll warn everyone, it won't be in that order. Heavenly Father, I just, I thank you for this day, Lord. I thank you for this day that you have made. As we sit and see the trees beginning to bloom and the new growth coming forth, Father, I am reminded that this is most of our favorite times to be residents of Kirtuk County. Lord, with the springtime and with the activities that are before us, Father, I thank you for the change in seasons. If it weren't for the cold weather, we would not be able to appreciate what you bring us in the spring and in the summertime. Father, I ask that you would bless this fort this evening, Father, that you would bless our understanding of the issues, Father, and give us wisdom as we rule on that which is before us. Father, we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with religion and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Beaumont. Our first item this evening is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, motion for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Our next agenda item is public comment. I have one individual signed up for public comment this evening. That is Wendy Shannon.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's good to be back. Some of you I haven't seen before me in this fashion before, so I'll introduce myself. I'm Wendy Shannon. I live at 204 Putten Ridge Road in Moyac. Spoken before the Board before on various things, but I do have one interesting thing, or at least I hope you and the citizens will find interesting. The Moyac Concerned Citizens Group, you are probably familiar with. Sometimes we have issues, negative, and sometimes we have positive things. And I'd like to let the Board and the county know that we have adopted the Highway 168 as an adopt-a-highway section from the state line to survey road. And we have had two official trash pickups so far. There's quite a lot out there, but it does make a difference when you pick it up, and it looks really good, and we're gonna continue to expand that effort. There is a state promoted, I think it's a period of two weeks in April, and we intend to post that on Facebook as well for anyone that would like to join us. There is also another group that is, I believe, in the process of adopting parts of Tulse Creek Road, so I hope that other citizens might consider banding together and doing something like that to help beautify the community. One other thing that's partially in relation to an agenda item later is the posting of notifications for public hearings. There was a posting for the item on the agenda tonight for Moyac Commons, and as far as we can tell, the only posting was at the end of East Street, which if you know anything about Moyac is at the end of a dirt road off of Putten Ridge. There was no posting visible to any general commuters going down Putten Ridge or the highway. It's not the first time things have been posted in an out-of-the-way area, so whoever's responsible in the county, I would ask that you please make sure that when you post something of interest to the community that you're gonna make a decision on, please make sure it's posted so that it's freely visible without having to go down back roads. Thank you again for your time, and you have good evening.
Ms. Shannon?
Yes, sir.
Can you, because I was under the impression adopt-a-highway was not...
(Inaudible).
Anyway, where, for the folks that are watching, and where is your point of contact? Is it through DOT?
It is. Actually, we had to search it up on the Internet, but the State Department of Transportation website has a link for adopt-a-highway, and they will refer you to a local representative, which I'm not sure exactly whether it's in Rocky Mountain or Greenville, but they, you can put your application in online, they send the paperwork, and your group puts in the application. Once they approve it, then you can get in contact with your local county office, which will provide pickup orange vests, gloves, bags that can be used for regular trash, and also recycling. You can have the county pick it up when you're done, or you can deliver the trash yourself to the trash disposal sites. It was actually posted as a bit of a negative comment on one of the Facebook pages about Moyac and trying to beautify the entrance to the county, and we just sort of took it and ran with it, and it's nice to do something positive.
Well, I'm glad that y'all stepped up for that, because that's outstanding, and I'm even more glad that the program still is in existence, because it is really effective.
Well, it is a bit of a challenge on the highway, and I will relay that there were some interesting things shouted at us about whether or not we ought to be misbehaving and being punished by picking up trash, and so I'm proud to say that there were quite a few of us that...
But you weren't wearing orange.
We were wearing orange, yes.
But not the whole jumpsuit thing.
That's correct. Not in the way that those folks might have thought.
Thank you.
But I think we've done six to eight bags the first time, and somewhere between eight and 10 the second time, and that was just a very small section. So again, we welcome anybody to join us. Keep an eye on the Facebook site for further information. Thank you.
Ms. Shannon, I want to thank you, first of all, and secondly, to add to that, Steve Shawgoe, Shawgoe, excuse me, sent us an email, and they are doing the one on Tulse Creek Road this Saturday, beginning at 10:00 a.m. I have not gotten the details of where they're all gathering, but I do know that he also reiterated that the state has provided the equipment. So in fact, that's another group, and then I've had another group in Shawboro that has brought up that they're gonna be doing it. So I just applaud you guys. Way back when, I led some initiatives to mow and clean up Moyac right there in front of the Baptist Church, so I know what it's like, so just be careful, but thank you again and again.
Thank you.
And they will be meeting at the Tulse Creek Clubhouse is where they'll be meeting at.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. We'll post that and share it on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. With that, I'll close public comment. Moving on to administrative reports. Cameron Lowe is here with her amazing staff to give the Kirtuk County Cooperative Extension a report to the people.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Dozier, and I am the current Chair of the Kirtuk Extension Advisory Council. We are pleased to be here tonight to share the impacts Extension staff and volunteers have made in Kirtuk County in 2016. I'm sure you all know, but just to reiterate for the public, Extension in Kirtuk is a partnership between the county and North Carolina State University. We exist to provide a no-to-low-cost educational resource to citizens of Kirtuk County that is based soundly in research conducted at our nation's land-grant universities. We provide courses and one-on-one technical support to solve problems in the areas of agriculture, food and nutrition, and 4H and youth development. In 2016, staff and volunteers conducted 247 classes and provided nearly 16,000 face-to-face consultations. We use a network of volunteers that donate their time to be sure these opportunities reach as many citizens as possible. And in 2016, these volunteers donated over 5,500 hours of service valued at just under To give you a few more details, I'd like to introduce County Extension Director Cameron Lowe.
Good evening. Bet you thought I had like a morph of some sort when Teresa got up here. So before I get into the details of 2016, I want to take the opportunity to recognize our advisors who are in attendance here with us tonight, as none of the accomplishments that we're talking about would be possible without them. Our citizen advisors actually help us determine what the needs are that we can address within Cooperative Extension here in Kirtuk County, and then they help us evaluate the effectiveness of our programming, the publications we produce, and the advice that we give. So representing this vital group to us here tonight are Teresa Dozier, who you already met, and I'll make a wave to you, Josh Bass, Evelyn Henley, Julie Fulwick, and Ms. Peggy Jordan. And we truly thank them for their contributions to the community and their contributions to Cooperative Extension. So I'm gonna take you program area by program area and share with you just a little bit about what was done in 2016. You've got a sheet with the statistics on it before you already, so I won't bore you with those. If you want another copy of it, or if the public needs a copy, they're online at our website, and everything I talk about is actually online on our website under what's called our Program Impact Report. So let's look at agriculture first. Our agriculture staff consists of, our agriculture agent, for a few more days anyway, Mr. Tommy Grandy, there he is, and our agriculture technician, Ms. Sarah Watts. Sarah, there we go. All right. In 2016, our agriculture programs touched all aspects of Kirtuk agriculture, not just our farms, but our landscapes, our ponds, and so on and so forth. Of particular note, in 2016, 43 of our Extension Master Gardener volunteers met requirements and received their recertification. As a result of participation in Extension educational programs, Kirtuk farmers realized right around a half million dollars in net income gains and/or preserved wages by using the information that they learned and the practices that they were taught and maintaining their current pesticide applicator certifications. Of course, you all know, and I mentioned it before, that much to our sorrow, our longtime agriculture agent, Tommy Grandy, has announced his retirement effective at the end of this month. Tommy has invested his lifetime in Kirtuk County, but specifically, he's invested the last 24 years of his career here in Kirtuk, supporting our farmers who, as he says, truly love agriculture and our people whose labors truly feed our nation. Tommy has a passion for his work that is evident in his outstanding relationships and the trust that the agricultural community places in him. And I could go on and on, but I won't, because Tommy doesn't like the attention, I know that, but I could not pass up the opportunity to stand before you tonight and let you know and let the community know and everyone here know just how much we appreciate his contributions and how much we'll certainly miss him. So I wanted that on public record. (Applause). Of course, I anticipate I'll be calling him daily, but at any rate, and just so you are aware, his position will be advertised through NC State in early April. So let's move on to our Family and Consumer Sciences Department. That department consists of our agent, Ms. Olivia Jones, there she is, and our Family and Consumer Sciences Program Assistant, Ms. Sheila Gregory. These ladies do an outstanding job. Family and Consumer Sciences programming in 2016 focused on health, nutrition, food safety, volunteerism, and senior adult issues. Our Family and Consumer Science staff and volunteers, which there are a couple of here, assisted 224 Medicare beneficiaries during open enrollment. That's a period between October and December. So they assisted 224 Medicare beneficiaries during that time. We see them all year round, but during that time, and saved those clients $98,000 in medical and prescription drug care costs. We also implemented a comprehensive nutrition education program to combat obesity and chronic disease risk, and we used web-based instruction, face-to-face classes, and instructional video to conduct those programs. Over 200 people that were involved in those nutrition education programs indicated that they increased their fruit and vegetable intake, and that is a major key measure in improving overall health. So we're gonna transition to 4H real quick. I told you I won't keep you long. And our County 4H program transitioned to new leadership this year. We have a new 4H agent, Sheri Fischel-Schweiger. She is now serving in that role, and she and our newest 4H program assistant who started March 1st, Stacy Harefield, they're actually attending some necessary training out in the center part of the state. So they're not here tonight, but we do have folks representing the 4H department, and those are 4H Program Assistant Stephanie Minton, Stephanie, and CCRC Director and 4H Program Assistant Tom Harrell, and our CCRC staff, which includes Center Manager John Fitchett and Park Attendant Tim Vick. Now, our 4H programming, as you all are used to, continued to offer those inquiry-based programs that focused on science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM. One of the particular highlights that we're very proud of this year is that we recruited new 4H club volunteers, which meant that we're able to increase the number of 4H clubs available to Kirtuk County youth. And here's why that's important. Nationwide research has taught us that those youth that are members of 4H clubs are four times as likely to contribute to their community, they are twice as likely to be civically active, and they're twice as likely to make healthy choices. So 4H clubs are a cornerstone of our strategy here in Kirtuk County. Other things that we're very proud of, partnerships were expanded to eliminate financial barriers to participation for kids in 4H programs and support their participation in educational contests and activities. And the 4H Backpack for Kids program continued to provide those weekend meals for over 150 children in need at no cost, thanks to corporate, church, civic group, and citizen donations as well as grants we were able to procure this year. So we're very pleased with that program. The CCRC, Kirtuk County Rural Center, is actually managed underneath our 4H department and Cooperative Extension, and this group continued to grow in the number of events that we held, the number of outside reservations that were made, and the number of guests visiting the park. Weekend rentals in 2016 reached 33% capacity with 22 total events taking place throughout the year. In the spring of this year, we were at 31% capacity on weekends, while we grew to a 57% capacity during the fall season. Our main indoor arena was recovered this spring, and then the project to install camper hookups was completed just here recently, and that's designed so that we can increase those multi-day rentals. It was in full swing and use this weekend at the Cowboy Mounted Shooter event. We are in conversation already with potential renters for fall and 2018 bookings. And we especially want to thank our partners in the Tourism Department for their assistance with promoting this facility, and we want to give a quick shout-out to our county engineer for his leadership with the RV project. I'm always proud of how this county pulls together to get stuff done, so couldn't help but give a shout-out. And then finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize our administrative staff that are also here with us tonight. So we have Sheri Lynn, our Administrative Coordinator, and Lisa Floyd, our Building Custodian. And these two ladies are truly the glue that holds our building together, literally. I don't know if you've been to the Extension Center lately, but despite nearly nine years of extensive use, when you walk through the doors, it still looks pristine, well-kept, and even has that new car smell, in my opinion. And that is very much due to Lisa's leadership and her commitment to excellence. In 2016, in addition to the numerous classes that we offer in Extension, the facility was utilized for over 151 other events by county and outside groups. There were nine rentals generating nearly $5,000 in facility use fees. And let me pause and say something about Sheri Lynn just real quick, too. If you guys have interacted with our office at all, you know that she holds a very high level of excellence and accountability, and she keeps us all straight. And in 2016, she has continued to do the job of two people, following the loss of our Support Specialist position in late 2014. Somehow, she's managed to keep me in line, which is a job in and of itself. She facilitates user groups to transition to online communication, reducing our costs, and she maintains an extraordinarily high standard of accountability and excellence. Anything that leaves out of our office is passed most times through her desk, and it's right when it goes out. So we appreciate the work that she does. Definitely worthy of that right-arm title, for sure. So in summary, I'll wrap it up here. Kirtuk Cooperative Extension continues to offer a diverse program that's focused on improving the lives, land, and economy of all of our citizens. And we thank you for your support. We couldn't do it without that, and we do welcome any comments or questions that you might have at this time. And the staff's available to answer any questions, too. So shoot them at us if you got them. All right. Going lots. Thank you, guys, so much.
You gonna have another rodeo this year?
Correct. Yes. It's on its way. It's actually already in planning, sir.
Judge check.
Yes, yes. All right. Thank you, guys.
Cameron, thank you for all you do there and your staff. It is amazing every time I walk in there, it's a place with a brand there.
Thank you.
And everyone's attitude when you go there and all the things you do throughout the county, y'all are always ambassadors for the county, and I'm sure that everyone here appreciates it. Thank you so much.
We have a lot of fun. We love what we do.
Thank you much.
Mr. Chairman, I want to echo, Cameron, I want to echo what you said about Mr. Grandy. He is surely gonna be missed, but you enjoy every minute of retirement, okay? Now he can start playing.
I feel like I'm in trouble when we get out of this room, but thank you, guys.
Moving on to our next report, the Lower Kirtuk Volunteer Fire Department will bring their annual report. Chief Hart and his motley crew are here.
Thank you very much. I want to again thank y'all for allowing us to come up here and give you all a quick update of what's going on with Kirtuk.
Chief, thank you.
All right.
(Inaudible).
Sorry about that, chief. Go ahead.
That's all right. Thank you for allowing us to come here today and give you a little bit of update of what Lower Kirtuk has been accomplishing over the past eight months. First of all, I want to start off with introducing my Deputy Chief, which is my right-hand man. It sometimes gets me, calms me down a little bit when I get a little upset over stuff. And then Charlie McNaul, he's one of my firefighters, he also does our rank writing along with the Deputy Chief. Gene McLonhorn, he's one of my firefighters, and also our pastor, and Robbie Henderson, a firefighter, and myself, Vernon Hart, Fire Chief. First of all, I want to do, again, thank y'all for everything that y'all have done to us and supporting us through the years that I've been with Lower Kirtuk and the Fire Chief. I just had my 20 years with the Fire Department this year, and it's been a very challenging project for me, being the Fire Chief since 2014, but I've enjoyed every bit of it. Two weeks ago, we had our annual awards banquet, and several of the commissioners were able to attend. Some of y'all weren't able to attend this year, but hopefully next year that'll be different. We had many awards given out, and one of the awards that was supposed to be given out that wasn't given out because the commissioner was homesick was Mike Payment. Mike Payment just recently had five years of service with Lower Kirtuk Volunteer Fire Department. He's been a very beneficial person for this department, helping us out with calls, training, and everything like that, and I just want to thank him for everything he does for us in Lower Kirtuk. A brief history of Lower Kirtuk. Lower Kirtuk covers approximately 62 square miles at the lower end. This does not include the waters surrounding the area. We had last year several water rescue calls, about six of them compared to the year before that, we had only one. Lower Kirtuk has housing of apparatus at three stages, Water Lily, Grandy, and Powell's Point. We have 11 apparatus and one water rescue boat, and we right now have at least 50 members, active members in our department. Call volume for the past years, 2014, we had approximately 408 calls, 2015, we had 491 calls, which is an increase from the previous year of 2014 of 20.5% increase. 2016, we had 564 calls, which that's an increase of 15 from the previous year. And right now, for 2017, where we're going, we're at 25% more than we were at this time last year. And with calculations and all that's going on, the calls and stuff, we could probably reach over 700 calls this year alone as a volunteer fire department. Some of the highlighted areas that we've had, most of our high-volume calls in 2016, we had 187 motor vehicle accidents compared to the year before that, which we had 177. Structure fires, we had last year 26 of them, compared to 2015, we had 15 of them. Again, our water rescue calls, we had six last year compared to 2015, we only had one. So things are progressing, getting higher and higher and higher for us. We do a lot of medical assist calls, not the medical part of it. EMS might call us to assist with cardiac arrest, CPR, lift assist. Last year, we had 103 compared to 2015, we had 123. Like I said, right now, we're steady keeping busy. We're averaging about 2.5 calls a day. We are able to have people at the station to help out with calls and do certain things that help us out with our, keeping our maintenance and stuff down. One of the projects that I've been working on for about a month, month and a half, is just recently, Lower Kirtuk is starting to install dash cameras with audio capability inside the apparatus. We don't have this, these cameras that we have are not the same thing as you see law enforcement wear, but the purpose of this is for many things. One, contact our insurance company, and we're gonna get a decrease in our insurance rating for this. Helps us out less the money that we have to pay out at the end of the year. It's also to assist us on any kind of critiquing, evaluating any of our training that we're using our apparatus, or even when responding to calls. Right now, it's, we've only got a couple apparatus installed into it. These are not, like I said, are not the ones that are used for law enforcement, but they're just as good. I've had one in my vehicle for some time, and it works very well, and we're gonna equip every one of our apparatus with them. It's, you know, it's just to help us out to make sure everything is going smoothly when you respond to calls and things like that. That's all that I'm gonna talk about, but I'm gonna let the Deputy Chief go into some of the projects that we're working on right now.
Thank you, everyone. Yeah, just a couple of things that, yeah, we're working on, like I said, the last six, eight months, year. The hydrant maintenance program that was funded this year for us, we've completed 89% of the hydrants in our district. We're on track to be finished by the end of the month, so that's a good thing. The Water Department's been great to work with, they've spent, the County GIS has been good to work with. They've actually given us all the hydrants in the county. We've instituted, put them on our program, which is called I Am Responding, which is a mapping system, tracking system, for when we are responding to calls, we know where the hydrants are, even in Crawford's District or Corolla or wherever we might be going. We forwarded approximately 35 repair issues to the county, and like I say, they've been very good on jumping right on it and getting things fixed and tagging things out of service, whatever the case might be. So that's been very helpful. The program has helped our members, provided them some training on water supply, driver training, district orientation, that kind of thing. So that's good. We can count some training hours. We're, you know, killing two birds with one stone, kind of thing. I want to give firefighter Robbie Henderson a little props. He was out doing hydrants last week and noticed and reported a downed live power line that could have been an immediate life safety hazard to several houses down on Swan Circle down in Point Harbor. So to his honor. We instituted a program this year also called PS Trax, which is a way that we can do truck checks and inventory maintenance and things like that on an iPad essentially, or on a smartphone. So if firefighter Henderson goes up to the Water Lily Station, he can do all the stuff. He can take equipment out of service, update things, you know, maintenance issues, whatever it might be. So it's a way to more thoroughly conduct and get done our apparatus checks, which helps us on many levels, you know, training, ISO, all of that kind of stuff. And it keeps our officers and our senior firefighters, you know, in the loop on inventory that needs, that needs some maintenance or testing procedures that might need to get done. We pulled a bunch of air bottles today to send out to get hydrotested, which is something that needs to happen every now and then. So that's a good thing for us, too. We worked with a couple businesses in our district, we are working with, on a project called, it's a Knox Box Program. Some of y'all may have heard of it, some of you may have not. And what that is, is it allows, it's a little vault that's mounted on the outside of a business or residence, and there's a special key that only we have, that we have in a secured vault in our apparatus, so we can access your property after hours. If it's a, you know, a firearm activation, sometimes we're out there for two hours waiting for a key holder just to go check. If it's on fire, obviously, we will do what we need to do to figure that part out, but for a firearm, we don't want to break somebody's window, break somebody's door. If it's a, you know, a firearm activation, sometimes we're out there for two hours waiting for a key holder just to go check. If it's on fire, obviously, we will do what we need to do to figure that part out. But for a firearm, we don't want to break somebody's window, break somebody's door to go in and just investigate. So it's a way to, to help with some of those calls so we're not tying up resources on scene for hours, waiting for key holders from Virginia or wherever it might be. And we're working with a couple businesses in our district to get some of those going and try to keep promoting that. It is tracked by a password on the vault in our apparatus. So if I go in there, I got to punch in my code. I can take the key out, go to the business, access the Knox Box, gain access, do what we got to do, investigate, secure the keys, secure our key back in our apparatus. It's all timestamped, it's all tracked, and there's ways for accountability and tracking purposes associated with that. Excuse me. The last thing I want to say is we've done a recruitment video that actually I think Commissioner White was at one of these. I don't think you'll see him in this, but.
No.
I don't think we'll see you in this, but.
You were there, I'm pretty sure.
And we contracted with a gentleman named Donnie Davis with a poor man's production company. And he does, does this stuff for us and it kind of gives us everybody a glimpse of what we do on the training ground, on a real fire. And some people have never seen this stuff, so it's good to have some inside footage. We have some aerial footage and hopefully we will generate some recruitment enthusiasm to get some new members coming in. So this is what we're going to, we're going to show this for you, show this to you now and hopefully you'll like it.
Again, I just want to thank the board and everybody in the county for supporting us all for getting up in the middle of the night, like you said, out of a nice warm bed and just cold, and work a fire for several, several hours and then cleaning up afterwards. So again, thanks again for everything that you do for us. Really, really appreciate it. If you have any questions, let us know. And again, our doors are always open. We're always there. I am two days a week EMS and three or four days.
Five and a half other days.
Yeah.
I think you have it wrong. We need to be thanking y'all. Y'all are the ones who do a fabulous job. And the chairman and myself, we had the opportunity to go to your awards ceremony and not only did you do a great job, but y'all have a lot of fun, too.
Thank y'all very much.
Yeah, you can tell the morale's really high. You can tell y'all work hard together, play hard together and, you know, that comes from the top down.
Thank you.
I feel want to appreciate it. And I love that y'all right down the street. Make sure you sleep better at night.
Don't let them fool you. The training is very rigorous and tough.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item, public hearing, PB 13-12 Moyoc Commons Phase One. Request for preliminary plat slash use permit for a 55 lot residential subdivision located on the Westerly Terminus of Moyoc Commons Drive behind the Food Line Shopping Center, Tax MAC 15, parcel 79, Moyoc Township. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Woody. And I'm sorry, sir, I don't remember your name. Thank you, Stuart. If y'all can step forward to be sworn in. Please raise your right hand.
Okay. Never done this before.
You swear to testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it.
I do.
That'll hand it over to Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a preliminary plat use permit request for Moyoc Commons subdivision, in particular Phase One. This property is on the aerial photograph highlighted in blue. You can see it's adjacent to the Food Line Grocery Store in the Moyoc Commons Shopping Center. And of course, it's also adjacent to some of the residences, residences that are located on E Street. There are two other parcels that are often associated with this development, however, they are not part of this. The two larger tracts that are to the left of the highlighted area, so that would be to the southwest, those were, at one point, they had applied to have those zoned to residential. That was not approved. So tonight, what's before you for this preliminary plat request is only the parcel that's highlighted in blue on the screen, which is about 27 acres. This tract of land that's located behind the, behind the Food Line Shopping Center Moyoc Commons, you can see these three parcels that I just referred to are two are zoned agricultural. One parcel, the subject property, was rezoned from agricultural to conditional district, single-family mainland on March 17th, 2014. And of course, you can see the shopping center is zoned general business and Quell Run and some of the other residential areas in close proximity are zoned single-family mainland. Land use plan, 2006 land use plan designates this area as full service as well as the Moyoc Mallier Plan, which also designates this area as full service. The full service is a designation in our planning documents. It refers to areas that typically have access to water and sewer and therefore generally developed at higher densities than you would ordinarily see where you didn't have water and sewer infrastructure in place. We'll do this. And there's the conceptual plan from the conditional zoning district you can see on the screen there. And this is difficult to see, but there is the preliminary plat. What's before you tonight as a preliminary plat is the, the next step in our approval process. Typically, once a property is zoned correctly, which this was zoned for single-family mainland in 2014, the next approval process is a preliminary plat where the board is considering the what extent the development meets the standards of the subdivision requirements of the UDO in addition to the four findings that the board's required to make in association with the use permit. So that's where we're at tonight on this process. If the preliminary plat's approved, the next step is construction drawings and then final plat where the subdivision's actually recorded. This particular subdivision is again 27 acres. It is proposing 55 lots on the 27 acres. Of that, about 10 acres of 40% of this property will be in, a little easier to see on this map, will remain in open space. The overall project density is about two units per acre is what the gross density ends up being. Couple of things I want to cover real quickly before I get into the details of the staff or the staff report and TRC recommendation. Number one is this subdivision, one of the things that staff reviews it for the TRC is compliance with the UDO. There are three things I want to note and I'll come back to those in the recommendation. Number one is that, and this is more of a procedural issue, but at the time, a community meeting is required for this particular subdivision. The community meeting was held on September 27th of 2016. However, as part of that meeting, community meeting process, the staff was not sent a notice, so we did not attend that community meeting. Nobody from the planning department did. However, in your agenda package, there are meeting notes or a summary of the community meeting included. Additionally, another thing that I want to call out is on our conservation subdivision ordinance, we require that any area that is designated as wetlands be incorporated or included in the conservation area because the point of a conservation subdivision is to preserve areas that may be of any kind of environmental significance. In this particular case, there are two small pockets of wetlands that are still located on the site. The applicant can speak to this more directly, but my understanding is they are moving through the process to get what's called a nationwide permit, which would allow them to fill those wetlands. However, the way our ordinance is mapped out is either the wetlands have to be resolved and filled before they build the subdivision or those areas have to be put into conservation designation. And the last thing I want to note is access our ordinance requires, or the UDO requires that any new subdivision connect to an improved street that meets the NC DOT Design and Construction Standards or a street that's been accepted for maintenance by NC DOT. The primary access for this subdivision is proposed to be Moyoc Commons Drive, which is the road that connects this parcel through the shopping center out to Keratoa Colera 168. In this particular request, that street will have to be upgraded to NC DOT Design and Construction Standards. That particular street is a publicly dedicated right of way and there was a day and time many, many years ago when it actually met NC DOT Design and Construction Standards, but over time with wear and tear, it's deteriorated somewhat. So there will have to be, before this subdivision could be platted, there'll have to be improvements made to that access way to bring it up to the proper standard. I'm going to come back to those three points of the recommendation in a second, but real quickly, some of the infrastructure related information. This property is proposed to connect to the county water system as well as the county sewer system, so it would have public water and sewer. It is proposing five-foot concrete sidewalks. If it is approved, there'll be a number of areas where connectivity will occur. What that means is it would have to connect into the other parcels that adjoin it to provide some additional connectivity between tracts of land. Stormwater's been a really big concern with this property over the years, actually. It's one of the big concerns that came up in the rezoning that was approved in 2014. One thing that was particular about that rezoning request in 2014 is that the applicant, as a condition of the zoning approval, was required to do a preliminary drainage analysis prior to submitting this preliminary plat. So that's, what that means is they had to do a lot of upfront drainage analysis and the beginning of engineering work and have that approved by the technical review committee before they could even submit for this preliminary plat. So they have done that. They've submitted information that's been reviewed by the TRC and they do have a plan, an engineer plan, that will actually meet the requirements of the UDO for stormwater. And so what that means is they've got to, they've got to capture and hold a six-inch rain event on the site and then release that no faster than that of a two-inch rain event leaving the site. And specifically what they're proposing to do is along E Street, which you can see on this map, and I'll try to point it out to your attention, there's E Street right here. What they're proposing to do through an easement is create a conveyance or a stormwater pipe that will run on the west side of E Street to Puddin Ridge Road, after which it then, let's see if we can get a better, after which it then would cross under Puddin Ridge Road and then go to the outlet, which eventually goes out towards the Currituck Sound. So they are proposing to capture the water, hold it as required and then convey it down Puddin Ridge Road in a new pipe. When it goes underneath Puddin Ridge Road, they're also proposing to improve and upsize the culverts that go underneath Puddin Ridge Road. So I just point this out to note they are, they are proposing off-site drainage improvements in terms of managing the outlet for this development. The applicant or even the county engineer can probably answer any really technical questions you have on that stormwater plan and their proposal. Schools this does, a 55 lot subdivision will generate, when it's built out, according to our formula, 13 elementary students, four middle school students and seven high school students. The county does have adequate capacity to serve this subdivision upon build-out. In your conditional zoning approval, there was information not only about conducting the drainage study, but also that the dwellings should be constructed with either a crawl space or on raised slabs and have a finished floor at least 16 inches above the outside ground grade. And what that's doing for these particular dwellings, it'll raise them above any kind of perhaps flooding issues that could exist within this development. No lighting is proposed at this time. If they do propose lighting for the subdivision, it will have to be full cutoff fixtures and meet the ordinance requirements, which basically makes all the lighting be downlit. But again, they're not proposing lighting at this time. And lastly, there is a recreation and park area dedication with subdivision, so a developer has to first offer land dedication to the county. If the county decides it's not of enough size or isn't in the appropriate location for any kind of real use for the county for parks or recreation, then the county will collect a fee in lieu of that dedication. In this particular case, the staff is recommending that the board of commissioners collect the fee, which would be a total of $4,720, which is then put into the county budget and can then be used at a future date along with other fees collected to acquire land for parks and recreation use. Any questions on the technical information? I'll take a breath for a second. The TRC is recommending approval of this sub.
I'm sorry, Dan, I do have, I do have a quick question. On the stormwater, with their, with their drainage plan, does that affect any flooding on the north side of Puddin Ridge Road as it goes under there and goes through their
I don't believe it does, but I'm going to ask the engineer for the project to answer that question.
Okay.
So I want to be careful how I answer that, but I think it's, not if you want him to answer it now or later.
It can wait. That's fine. If you're going to answer it, that's fine. Okay.
Yeah, they've, there's a, they're required by ordinance to model these drainage plans where they don't increase the, kind of the rise or exacerbate downstream conditions. So my layman's technical answer is no, it shouldn't, but I'd like him to explain that in greater detail.
Okay.
Dan, I have a question. I don't remember the name of the access grid that comes in off of 168 directly in, but I am thoroughly familiar with Moyoc Commons, which is the road that comes off at a 90-degree angle to that.
Correct.
And it is 55 houses and that traffic is not going to be constrained to that road alone. That traffic is also going to wind up being on Moyoc Commons.
And that road has shown just as much wear and tear as that main entrance way is. Just to be, I guess, explicit, nothing is going to be done to Moyoc Commons. Is that correct? It's. It will have to be done in order for the subdivision to be built. The, the road that goes to the 90 degrees to the right. Right here. No. To the right. Yes. Oh, correct. Yes, I understand. Yeah, there'll be no improvements made to that, to that road. What they're required to do is make improvements to whatever, whatever road accesses this development has to be up to NC DOT Design and Construction Standards. That's the direct access. That's going to get just trashed.
Mr. Woody, can you define what would be required for NC DOT for Moyoc Commons Drive? Because that's across private property, correct?
It's, it's a privately owned. It's a privately owned, publicly dedicated right-of-way.
So for the developer to upgrade that to N C D O T standards, they would have to have conveyance?
They, and I'm going to defer to the county attorney, but I'm answering the first part of that. In order to make improvements to the right-of-way and the road, they don't necessarily have to own the fees. There doesn't have to be conveyance, but ideally, they would have the ability to work with the private owners of that road to go in and make whatever improvements are necessary to bring it up to standard. I guess the question is, if the owners of that road were not agreeable to that, since it's a publicly dedicated road, could they still go in and make those improvements? And I would ask maybe the county attorney to weigh in on that.
Yeah, that gets into, I guess, the issue regarding an abutting landowner's rights to access their property by way of a dedicated right-of-way. There's case law in this state that's clear with regard to an unopened right-of-way. The abutting property owner would have the right to go on to the right-of-way and improve it so that they could use it. So I would say using that, those cases as a foundation, I think they would have the ability to improve this particular right-of-way in order to access and use their property.
So in the same terms that N C D O T would take over the roads in the development, can someone, or maybe the applicant can define what's required in the roads in the development to be brought to N C standards?
So the roads in the development would have to meet the D O T standards, as well as the connecting road. And what that typically means is maintaining at least a 50-foot right-of-way, so you could have enough space to have, you know, the road bed and associated drainage features. Then the construction of the road itself has to meet the D O T standards, which is a certain thickness of A B C stone, followed up by a certain thickness of asphalt. And of course, you have to maintain properly graded and stabilized shoulders. And what will happen is D O T usually will go out for an old street or a new street and go assess that, require asphalt or core testing of the street to make sure it meets their standards. So there is, it's more complicated than that, but that's generally what you've got to do to get D O T compliance.
And what about school buses, trucks? Is there a criteria that has to be met for a cul-de-sac or some type of other guidelines that are required by N C D O T to bring them up to standard?
Yeah, they'll have to meet fire code standards, which relate to the load bearing capacity of the road. So it's got to be able to hold a 75,000-pound truck, which will usually cover fire trucks, school buses, trash trucks, et cetera. And of course, as part of the review of the subdivision, the county fire marshal will make sure there's appropriate turnarounds or connectivity. So all that kind of, although new development will get caught through the TRC review process, but the important thing is making sure that Moyauk Commons Drive, the access, is able to hold, for example, a 75,000-pound vehicle, but additionally, all the traffic that will be associated with 55 lots. And that's one of the key things that must be done before this can be, if it's approved tonight, that must be done before it can be platted.
Thank you.
Mr. Woody, I have another question for you. Is there another exit out of the neighborhood or just Moyauk Commons? It's not quite clear.
Just one entrance.
This property abuts E Street, which is the road here, but my understanding is that's not going to be connected, and the plan is to only use Moyauk Commons Drive as the access. Now, if the other two properties that adjoin this are ever developed, and they may or may not be, but if they are, eventually, this would connect to the quell-run subdivision, which would then create another way out of it long-term.
Okay.
Excuse me. I cannot sign a agreement. If you're going to do a protest, we as residents might be able to dispute briefly.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So to wrap it up on my end of things, the TRC recommendation is for approval with conditions, and the conditions that the TRC are requiring are, number one, that a wetland, an approved wetland delineation be provided by the Army Corps of Engineers, or a nationwide permit to allow filling of those wetlands prior to any, the permit and approval by the Corps prior to filling the wetlands, or if that is not provided, then those wetlands must be placed in conservation area. So that would be one of the conditions of approval. The second condition is that Moyauk Commons Drive must meet N C D O T design and construction standards, and that's the entire Moyauk Commons Drive from the subject property line to Keratoke Highway, which is about 850 feet of road, and it must be improved to meet current D O T design and construction standards, or be accepted by N C D O T for maintenance prior to approval of the final plat. And then lastly, that the, two other ones, that the calculations and details of the stormwater sewer and water lines be reviewed at construction drawings supplemental. And last condition, that accessible parking or passenger loading zones be created at cluster mailbox units within the development. And just to give some context, the postal service doesn't want to deliver mail to individual houses anymore, so the postal service is now asking the county to require cluster mailboxes for new subdivisions, where you would drive in and pick up your mail in a box with all your other neighbors. So that's just reflection of that new postal service policy that we're trying to work into our conditions. So staff does recommend approval of this request, provided those conditions are met by the developer. Another thing that you have to do tonight, as the Board of Commissioners, is this also has a use permit associated with it, as all subdivisions do, and there's four findings that must be made. So in addition to approving the preliminary plat with those conditions recommended by staff, you also have to make findings that the use will not endanger the public health or safety, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands, will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, it's in conformity with the land use plan, and the county has adequate public facilities to service or provide service to the development. The applicant has provided their suggested findings for those for you to review. That's in your staff report and in their application. And with that, I can answer any questions you have now or after the public hearing comments.
Mr. Woody, can you point to where this mailbox cluster is going, or that's not in the rendition?
I don't believe that's in the rendition at this point. It would probably be in an open space, so most likely, it's going to be somewhere in here, I would think.
And there's no on-street parking, correct?
There's no on-street parking. And again, I'll remind the board, it's a good question, because if you're concerned about issues, since this is a use permit, you have the ability that, as a board, to impose conditions on the development as well. So for example, you can impose a condition that no on-street parking be allowed.
I guess the question he's asking is how would they access their mailboxes?
They'll have to provide a, kind of a pull-off area in the open space, where you would just pull your car in, hop out of your car, check the mail. But what the building codes is going to require, that they also have a parking space or two, where if you have, if you're, so is ADA accessible for anybody that has a disability. So they're going to have to build that into this plan in the open space.
Yeah, one more question. Is there a reason they're using that road for access versus another road? It just seems like a lot of traffic coming next to all that shopping.
I think with this 155, and I'll let the applicant answer that maybe more specifically, but I believe with this one track, that that's probably the only viable access they have to this particular 55-acre track. The only other option would be to go through E Street, which, I mean, that road, I don't know that that road can even meet N C D O T standards, to be honest, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Woody?
One other one. The current owner of the property that the Food Lion sits on, have they provided any input as far as some of their concerns or to that effect?
I don't have anything from that property owner to share with the board. No, sir. They would have been notified of all this through our notification process.
Mr. Woody, when this was brought up some time ago, I remember there was a lot of discussion about drainage and flooding, and it seems like the applicant made a suggestion to the board, or, do you know what I'm speaking of the first time it was brought up?
Yeah, I mean, there's always been a lot of conversation in the condition I referenced earlier that required them. They've done more drainage engineering on this project than you would ordinarily do to get to this point. And I think one thing the applicant kind of provided or presented was that they would be willing to do some off-site improvements, and they are doing that. They are upsizing culverts underneath Pudding Ridge Road, and they're also improving the outlet down E Street. So they're doing some of those things off-site, and that's what I think they portrayed in early meetings they would do.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. If Mr. Parnell can come up.
Good evening, Board, concerned residents, and county staff. Thank you for this opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Stuart Parnell. I represent the firm of Hassel and Folks. We're located in Chesapeake, Virginia, and hopefully, I'm prepared to take your questions.
I'll start with, have you all had discussion with the owners of the right-of-way for the entrance that you're proposing, as far as receiving conveyance, or where you can bring that road up to N C D O T standards?
I personally have not, and I don't believe that members of our firm have. I believe those conversations have been had between Mr. Fieldman and the owners of the shopping center. And from what I understand, is that we can get in there and make improvements to Moyauk Commons Drive.
But you don't have anything as far as conveyance or anything in writing that you're aware of?
I do not. I have not seen that. No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Parnell, I had a question about the drainage going across Pudding Ridge to the north side.
Yes.
Can you speak to that at all?
Yes. Our analysis piggybacked on the back of a previously prepared and approved analysis by Mr. Quible, Quible and Associates. And we completed a detailed topographic survey all the way, basically, from Shingles Landing Creek, which is the main creek that goes towards Route 168, all the way back up through the site. So combined with his boundary flows and with our ditch sections, we modeled basically all the way from Route 168 up through the site. And again, those were, in Shingles Landing Creek, down in that floodplain area, we were using sections, ditch sections prepared by the Mr. Quible and Associates. And then with our detailed topo, we calculated existing and developed flows. There were two separate analyses, two separate scenarios. So we calculated the flows and water surface elevation in the ditches on the existing scenario. And then we calculated the flows and the water surface elevations on the proposed scenario. And the county ordinance is written such that the developed scenario cannot increase the downstream water surface elevations by any more than a hundredth of a foot, .01 foot. It's about the thickness of a penny. So we had a big challenge. So basically, as you can see, we just kept resizing the lakes until our outfall from the pond was very minimal, less than one CFS, basically, on a 10-year storm. And our analysis shows that we're not increasing the water surface elevations downstream. So that's basically the background. Now, to answer your question, what we worked with the county engineer was to minimize any flows in the E Street ditch. So therefore, we had to pipe that all the way from the pond discharge point down E Street in an existing easement to the north side of Pudding Ridge Road to that ditch number four. So we proposed to pipe along that E Street Avenue. We're crossing Pudding Ridge. And as Mr. Woody indicated, as we extend that pipe down E Avenue, where there's ditches coming and intersecting the existing ditch, we are collecting those ditches into the pipe systems, so that property will drain much more efficiently. That's the property, basically, as you're going up E Street, it's basically to the right. If you could point that out for me. Right, mhm. So he's got some existing ditches that drain back to E Street, and as we pipe, we're picking up those ditches, so his property's going to drain much more efficiently. And then we're crossing Pudding Ridge and going into ditch four. And also, we're installing, we're proposing to install a large, not a large, but maybe a 15- or 18-inch diameter culvert under Pudding Ridge Road, which will increase the capacity and the drainage efficiency of E Avenue. So those are the improvements, and that's how we're getting to the north side of Pudding Ridge Road. And then to address the water surface elevations. Does that answer your question?
Well, you're explaining to me how you're getting to the north side of Pudding Ridge, but we have 25 acres or 27 acres of property draining to the north side of Pudding Ridge Road. That's a lot of water. I'm still not getting an answer of where it goes. When it gets to north Pudding Ridge, where does it go?
Okay, that is ditch four. And what we have done is, we have enlarged these ponds and created an outfall discharge point that will physically reduce the amount of discharge that ditch sees. It's less, the amount of flow coming off this 27 acres is less than like a two-year storm. It's less than the 10-year storm, and it only increases the water surface elevations by less than a penny's thickness. So in reality, according to the calculations, that we're not negatively impacting that ditch. And that is in accordance with U T O criteria, the county U D O criteria.
So what you're telling me is the water on that property is going to go to the ponds more than it's going to go to Pudding Ridge?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And the ponds are sufficiently large so that the water just basically exits at like .5 CFS, you know? We're talking hundreds of CFS in Shingles Creek land, in Shingles Creek, you know? And so in a watershed area that's producing a couple hundred, a few hundred CFS, we're producing a discharge of less than one CFS. And that's what's hitting E Street.
I'm going to help just a little bit. What happens is the pond acts as like an absorber, right? It's a shock absorber. So it absorbs the storm flow initially, and then allows it to drain over time through the culvert that's going through ditch number four.
Thank you.
What size culvert currently exists across Pudding Ridge?
I believe that's a 15- or 18-inch size right now.
Okay, so replacing an 18 with an 18 doesn't sound like it's going to increase anything.
No, we're actually placing it alongside.
So next to it.
So an additional 18-inch?
Mhm.
Okay.
Let me, I'd like to answer your question in more detail. There's an existing corrugated metal culvert that crosses Pudding Ridge Road and connects the E Street ditch to ditch four. That's a 24-inch corrugated metal pipe. What we're doing is alongside that, we're proposing a 24-inch R C P right alongside that, so that now that E Street ditch is going to drain much more efficiently. And once you have a large nor'easter or a storm event that kind of floods that area, that area will more efficient, as the downstream water surface elevation goes down, then those residents should see a more efficient drainage system.
And you're going to clean out all the feeder ditches that are feeding E Street on the way? Is that what I understood you to say?
On the, I've got a north area now, on the south side of E Street.
Right. The tract that's on the south side of E Street that is typically feeding to the north.
There's existing ditch now, right there along the roadside. That's going to become a swale over the pipe, and then the ditches that come perpendicular to that, to the existing ditch now will be piped.
Okay.
A portion of it will be piped to the limit of the easement.
So you're going to be bringing your pipe from the pond underneath E Street to pick up the ditches?
Yes, and those ditches will be collected.
And is that? Do you need to get closer to the diagram? I mean, if you got any closer, I...
I need to get younger.
Wow. So, is that consistent with the plans that the county has received, as far as what they plan to do? Because I need to know if we need to make a motion that would include that, you know, hypothetically, if there was an approval? Or is it already part of their plans?
It's already part of the plan.
Yeah, we've had people tell us that before. Who are you staring at? Up staring at the county engineer, but he ain't eyeing his head.
But he's not blinking.
No.
Mr. Parnell, I have a question for you. On the south side of this property, there's a ditch that runs perpendicular to 168. Does any of the drainage currently flow, natural flow, to that ditch?
I'm not real sure what ditch you're referring to.
Mr. Woody, if you can move to the...
I'm a diagram guy for one thing.
South side of...
South side?
Of the property, all the way to the far right, down below.
That's ditch one.
Ditch one.
On the south end.
Ditch one back, okay, south, down 168.
South, correct. That one there. Is there any natural flow there?
Currently, there is natural flow in that ditch. But as we do these development plans, there'll be less flow going to that ditch than now.
Why would you not, I'm not an engineer, but understanding the natural flow of water, I'm just thinking, you know, why would you not send it that way?
That ditch, it was decided on early, that ditch was not, did not have great capacity to it. And in fact, there's something, there's a pump or something, it's just, can you help me with, what is that pump?
Under 168 and the railroad.
Yeah, there's constrictions there, at the railroad.
And he's going to be sworn.
Is that the railroad one?
But early on, it was decided that that ditch was out of the question, due to its capacity and its existing conditions.
Weatherly, if you can get sworn in, please.
Should have done this, should have. I didn't roll too well.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but true, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, ditch one doesn't have the capacity we believe that ditch four would have to benefit the site. There's a couple of bottlenecks on ditch one that these guys were worried about, primarily under 168 and the railroad. And then, to the right of the railroad, is some areas that we're concerned about, so he elected to use ditch four.
And in reviewing the plans, is that plan part of those plans enough so that we can legally hold them accountable to making sure the second 24-inch corrugated cross pipe is installed as declared under...
I've tried, so from my standpoint, he had to go through this preliminary drainage calculation. Actually, for preliminary plan, he's got a pretty thorough drainage system. It shows it on these plans. From my standpoint, he's got a set of plans with his seal on it, says he's going to do it. From a legal standpoint, I don't know, but from his engineering standpoint, we're getting it.
So long as these plans are what you are approving, that would be a requirement that the applicant meet the conditions?
As depicted on the plan.
Correct.
Got it. Important that it's a board.
Let me, I'll venture.
Any further questions for Mr. Weatherly?
Thank you. Maybe I could clarify a little bit more with ditch one and ditch four. And the goal here, what Hassel and Folks have done is try to hold all the stormwater. They're holding, they dug a pond basically big enough that will hold the whole six-inch rain, rather than trying to work with the outlet. So, he hasn't done anything downstream. He's holding everything on site. And me, as county engineer, that frustrates me many, many times. You've heard us talk about our outlets over and over, and we just don't have the teeth in our UDO to make these developers go in and make any improvements downstream. So they hold it all. They don't even have any easements on ditch four, even if we wanted to make them widen it. I would rather go in there and let him build a subdivision, add grade, and let, and make the ditch big enough so it'll carry this water. But what they do, they go in there and they fill up the site, they jack it up, and then they dig a hole in the field, and say, that's where we want to store our stormwater. And as they do, the stormwater gets displaced to somewhere else, and it's got to go out. His subdivision will drain, it'll take care of his people, but then surrounding areas will be impacted that much more. There's nothing we can do about that. They are in a district, and the district has hired an engineer to go in and look at these ditches on a district-wide area, to see what kind of needs they have, what can they do to improve the drainage overall. That study is due before this budget cycle. So we're hoping to have some kind of recommendations from an engineer on what kind of capital improvements are needed within Moyauk District. And maybe with that, we can get some bigger ditches. It is so dynamic in this system, all ditches pretty much connect together. Ditch one connects a ditch four that connects a ditch five. So eventually, when this water rises high enough, it will go out ditch one. But right now, his primary outlet is ditch four. His model meets engineering calculations and general principles, he meets our UDO, but still, there are the concerns from the citizens, that they know what the site looks like, they know how it floods. And that's my dilemma, that I have to work, continue to work with the district to still take care of what improvements we can to make this area drain better. But he meets our UDO.
So is it your opinion that by filling this lot and building the ponds is going to create other issues?
I think that he's not solving the district's problems, let's put it that way.
Let's back up to another question. You're talking about ditch one going underneath the 168, the railroad?
Correct.
And we blame that on the state with the problems, because that ditch on the other side is always dry, correct?
That's right. Oh, no, you're talking about the one that parallels 168, right?
Right.
I'm talking to one that ditch one goes under the railroad and keeps going out by Cypress Land, out to Toles Creek Road.
All right, so where does it cross 168?
Right at Charlie Highs. It keeps, yeah, right there. So this bottleneck in between Sawyer Town and over in there, I think, is some of the limiting areas. And then, right there, you had mentioned the pump, that's at the outlet of ditch four, and ditch one, right there at the end of, where our stormwater system comes out from Moyauk Commons and our wastewater system, right there. There's a little ditch there that comes out of our wastewater plant. I think that's the pump you were talking about. But in general, ditch one has some bottlenecks in it that, maybe with the engineering study that the district is paying for, that they can identify some of those. But still, when they do identify them, they're going to have to come back to the county and say, well, how are we going to pay for it? And so then we get into the tax issue.
So, prior to that, what's the best solution? You're saying a bigger ditch solves all the problems?
Lot of times, a lot of times. If you have an outlet, I'll stick to it. Yes, sir.
I'm with you.
If you have a decent outlet, it solves a lot of problems. But we don't, we have the lack of our outlets control, we don't have control over them, we don't have the money to do it, they're not in the district, we don't have easements, and that's what this gentleman was faced with. So he dug a big pond on his tract and said, I'll hold it. And that's what he's doing.
So that brings up an interesting question, at least for me. Conceptually, how do you store that water? I mean, it's pretty low through there, the water table's very high.
He fills it, and so he's storing it above the water table with almost like a bermed-in pond.
Like a pump water into that pond, is that...
No, his whole, he fills his whole site, sort of gravity, into that pond.
The existing elevations out there near that lake are in the high sevens and the eights, so it is very low. And that's the rim of our ponds, eight. That's the proposed rim. And we've calculated the 100-year, and it comes up to, the water surface elevation in the pond would come up to about 7.6.
So what's your water table elevation? Probably 12 inches below grade.
Two, one to two inches.
So he's...
Excuse me, one to two feet.
He takes that into account, where that water table is, and how much storage can he put above it, and he will literally build a one-foot berm, in this case, around it was enough.
The 100-year elevation comes to 7.85, and our rim's at eight. So we routed the 100-year storm event through that.
Again, that works for his site, but it does nothing for the community and these people in the back that's been on this drainage board, trying to solve some of these drainage problems. Again, that field will displace some water.
But what it does do, though, is this existing 27 acres, it generates runoff, and that runoff will not be seen anymore in the system. That runoff will be slowly dispersed at a much, much reduced rate.
Yeah, and it also served as a basin for flooding, it served as an area for flooding to go to, so it gets some of it displaced from the communities and displaced on your property. So you were handling some of the flooding from the other communities.
Isn't that against public policy? Is that against drainage property?
You have to accept the drainage from upstream property, if that's what you mean. But in this case, he's, I would say, he's building a stormwater system that inverts the flow into his community, into this pond, and keeps it away from the surrounding. It's tough.
So, so the property now, when he builds up, then the property on the west side of that, towards the development of Quail Run.
Quail Run.
So that can have the potential of even retaining, or holding even more water that used to drain on this property?
Well, ditch five is right there beside Quail Run. So you got ditch five between Moyauk Commons subdivision and Quail Run.
It's got more water in there.
But it'll, so that's the dynamics of the system.
Basically, what it turns into is a wellhead situation. Fill the lots, fill the lots, fill the lots, and then, before God has got the lot in between the two, it's flooded. Same scenario.
Mr. Parnell, a question for you. I know you're a professional engineer. What is your expertise?
Land development, basically. I've been practicing it since, almost 30 years now, since 1987.
Thank you.
I've been with two firms, basically, 13 years with a firm called Hogard Year Associates, some of you may know Ray Year in Portsmouth, Virginia, and now 15 years with Gray Folks, long-running and repeat clients.
I was just questioning, just to understand your expertise, if it was, you know, in soil or watershed, or what your expertise was. Thank you.
Thirty-seven. Thirty.
Thirty.
So 187.
Does the board have any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
With that, I will open the public hearing. As your name's called, please come forward, give your name and your address. Please understand you're limited to three minutes. And with that, I will invite Mrs. Lusk.
Excuse me, I put a button again, I apologize.
Ms. Penny, I put your name on the list.
We got you.
I appreciate you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am Peggy Lusk. My address is 140 B Street, Moyauk. E Street runs in front of my house. I've lived in that area for 30 years. I also have served on the Stormwater District Committee, the Steering Committee for the Future Land Use, I'm a member of that. I'm also a concerned citizen of Moyauk and serve, it's not an official board or anything, but I'm a part of that group, which we hope will encourage involvement by the residents and pride in the community. And speaking on Moyauk Commons Phase One, I had a handout given to you all that was done nine years ago. And even though this was in part related to a waste treatment facility, it still substantiates some of the problems that are in that soil. And I've highlighted those areas on here, such as the water table, the composition of that area, which includes that whole 27 acres, plus the other two parcels that are adjacent to it, that are still in the hands of the original owners, and to my knowledge, are not a part of the Moyauk Land Company. Going back to these ponds that seem to be what a lot of the builders, developers want to put in these areas, please pay attention to, if you will, the way that this soil has a high plasticity and the clay content. So when you build these ponds, the sides are not going to be a long-term stay-in-place situation. The other thing that I'd like to bring to the attention of the commissioners is what you all were just discussing about the backfill, out of these ponds being in whatever area that you're going to have a development. Classic example on this is what happened behind Taylor's when Moyauk Commons, where the food line is, was built. There was a berm that was built, that was supposed to be protecting the village, we'll call it Village of Moyauk. But what that berm has created is a dam. And in essence, if we get not only hurricanes, but nor'easters or other rain events, that water that is in that area of Sim Street and on back into the community builds up, and that ditch that everything that was discussed runs into E Street and the ditch four, can't handle all of the water that basically is in that dammed-up situation. The other thing that Mr. Parnell had brought up was the way that they were going to handle the outfall from what they're proposing on this with the pond. There is not sufficient elevation for the water to run from what this development is proposing, from them excavating out and running a pipe down E Street to where the water wants to flow into Shingle Landing. We have not only flooding within the community, but Puttin Ridge Road is susceptible to becoming completely covered with water. In just the recent pass with Matthew and all the water that that dumped into the community, everyone that was in my immediate area was just very concerned that the water was going to continue to rise, it was the worst that we have ever seen. And by adding more rooftops and pavement, it is going to create more water runoff. The property that's back there now, I've given you in that report that was done nine years ago, you can see how the water sits on the property, and that's what's going to be surrounding these 55 homes. The, I feel like that the, it's incompatible, the soil is incompatible for the density of the development, and it's going to result in the surrounding residents... of the development, and it's going to result in the surrounding, uh, residents paying the price of being flooded out and all of the problems that come with that flooding. You also heard about the traffic, uh, the traffic congestion in Moayak continues to be problematic. And the one street in and one street out, uh, with that being a private, uh, privately-owned road, I think that it's just a real unknown what would or wouldn't happen with that particular entrance and exit. And, and during the summertime, but it's not so much in the summertime as it was 20 or 30 years ago, it's becoming year-round with that Moayak Commons shopping area being used the way it is. But the incompatibility, uh, also of this type of development in Moayak, um, it's, it's incompatible with what the preferences of the residents want for their quality of life, which is a rural quality of life, life. And that was brought to the forefront, I think, very strongly, uh, in a survey that was done as a part of the Imagine Currytuck. People are moving down here to get away.
Ms. Lusk, if I can interrupt for just a second. We did give you some extra time, so if you can.
Oh, okay.
If you can speed up, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Another thing that concerns us, and I've seen it, is, uh, when people come down here, they have recreational vehicles, boats, et cetera. This type of development, if there's not parking on the street, they want to put their things somewhere. And if, that's another issue. But the, the flooding is the main problem that we're experiencing for the reasons that I've given you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Um, my name is Wendy Shannon, live at 204 Puddin' Ridge Road, uh, in Moayak. Uh, I'm going to try and touch on a couple of other things, um, following to what Ms. Lusk has said. She has a, a 30-year history, um, some of which she's conveyed to me, but there are things that were mentioned earlier this evening that I definitely want to point out. One of which is the survey that, uh, Mr. Weatherly mentioned and the analysis that's being done. We have, um, I'm on the stormwater, well, it's, it's called two different things that I've seen. Moayak Stormwater District Advisory Board, or also known as Moayak Watershed Advisory Board. And it is a finite area in, uh, Moayak. It does not encompass the entire Moayak, um, Fire District, uh, one of which, um, that was something that was also to be addressed at some point. Don't know if that'll have any bearing on it, but the funding for the survey that we have done is going to be an analysis that is comprehensive, much more so than the one that was referenced by Mr. Folks' representative. Uh, it is to, uh, the previous one that was done by Quible was, um, bits and pieces of the district. This one is supposed to be a comprehensive study. And it is to look at all of the ditches, the entire district, and what can be done across the board to handle some of the issues that we already have without any additional development. The existing flows that are being measured against by these sorts of drawings and these sorts of engineering studies are already higher than they should be. So to maintain a flow that is not much more than what we already have, but is already too high, is still a problem. So whatever they might do, assuming it's successful, which I have my doubts about that with the, with the pond and the other things that have been mentioned, it's still beyond what it ought to be. Matthew was a storm that caused extensive flooding across Puddin' Ridge. And for those of you that are aware, Puddin' Ridge was resurfaced two or three years ago. And it was raised up in places up to six inches higher than it was before. That has created essentially Puddin' Ridge Road Dam. It, it dams the water that wants to flow from this property, the food line area and so forth. It wants to flow towards Single Landing Creek. But now Puddin' Ridge itself is a dam, holding that water on the one side. And the pipes that exist, again, as we've mentioned, are not, um, don't have enough capacity to handle it. And then the study is going to tell us what we can do to remedy the current situation. Uh, the other thing is that people keep forgetting that if you look at this map, there's a lot of trees on these three properties. You take down the trees, you're removing additional ability to absorb water. So that's not being considered in what I'm seeing on here. The final thing is you have, you cannot make a decision, and, and I would submit that you already know this, based on what might happen to Parcels Two and Three. You can't, you, you have to base it on what you have in front of you. And ditch four might be improved to Kingdom Come, but if you can't control what happens downstream on the other side of Puddin' Ridge, then, then what's going to be the end result? And then finally, your decision has to be made based on four points. I would submit that there is no way that this gentleman and his property owner can avoid causing harm. And that is one of your four decision points. So I would submit that you really need to pay attention to that one. Thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Penny?
My name is Judy Penny. I live at 222 Puddin' Ridge Road. Uh, my property has ditch number five, which is the largest ditch running the entire length of my property. And during Matthew, we had six inches of water in my garage. It almost came up to my crawl space, which from what I understand, in the 30 years, it's never been that high. But everybody else has spoken very eloquently about ditches. I'm going to talk about traffic. I walk this property every single day. I walk all the way down Puddin' Ridge Road. I've been doing this for almost 15 years. It's a discipline. And I walk all the way down into Moayak Commons, all the way down to, uh, past the Sonic and everything else, all the way down to where the, uh, I can't think of what the pizzeria place or whatever is down there. And I walk back every single day, rain or shine, 30 degrees, 95 degrees. Everybody knows me, the crazy lady that walks every day. The different, if any of you are familiar with this area, that main road that comes out, besides being a terrible problem as far as traffic, if each house only has two cars and their teenage children have cars, everybody is going to start trying to come out other ways. They're going to try to come out by, and those roads are all closed off. So you're going to have them taking the road where the Dollar General is and the paint store. You're going to have them coming down, I think it's Lark Road or something like that, which is the road that takes you down before you get to the traffic light. People are going to be, whether it's your teenage son or somebody's going to be cutting through the parking lot or cutting through the other area to get out because they're late for work or they missed the school bus or something. It's going to become dangerous, and the roads themselves are not going to be able to handle it. I mean, the road, the pavement itself won't be able to. People shopping at the store are not going to be able to. You're going to have more accidents that, you know, your teenage son or your teenage daughter is in a hurry to get somewhere. They're going to scoot through the parking lot or scoot through that other side street to get down by the others. And they're going to be trying to circumvent, oh, now I'll get down here, there's no traffic light here, and make a left. You're going to have potentially more accidents. People in the parking lot, I can see people getting hurt. Oh, there's somebody in the parking space. I'll go through the parking lot to get out. Traffic-wise, I just don't see how it's conducive. I mean, I, personally, I would think that even if it was one house on an acre, which is what I happen to be on, my lot happens to be a little bit more than an acre. But flooding aside, which is a definite problem right off the bat, that traffic issue is going to be terrible. It's not like Survey Road, which takes you all the way down to Eagle Creek and people can, that's where they all wait for that light to get out or they can get up from the school. This is going to be a problem potentially, and soon as there, God forbid, there's one fatality or something where someone wasn't paying attention to a car pulling out or their child getting out of a car, and someone was scooting through that parking lot to get out or to get in, gee, I got to get home to pick up Jimmy so he can go to the dentist. I think it's a problem. I think it's, appropriately, I just don't think this area can handle what they're potentially, flooding-wise and traffic-wise. I think it's just not a good idea. Thank you.
Ms. Penny?
Yes?
I actually work on that Moayak Commons Road that you're referring to that goes down.
Oh, yes.
And, um, I can categorically tell you that when the traffic picks up, everybody pumps, anybody going south.
Right.
Takes that road.
I know.
And goes to the end and comes around.
Yes.
That the amount of traffic that that road, and I suggest this to the rest of the board as well, that's why I was asking the question, if the property owners or the property managers that have those roads have been contacted.
Right.
Because the amount of impact, the road is already bad.
Yes.
And with the amount of traffic that's going to be funneled down there, whether there's a traffic light there or not, anybody headed south, which is.
Right.
The middle school, the high school, uh, and Parks and Rec, anything to that side, they're all going to go down that road.
Plus, they may decide that they just want to risk it. Again, I personally always go to a traffic light.
It's actually faster to go that way, go out and then go left.
Right. Right, exactly. They may want to make that left and I, and there could be a very bad accident because of that. But it's also an issue as far as, I'm sorry. It's also an issue just as far as, like you said, just not the, literally the roadway itself, but also for, for traffic. Because I see that all the time when people ask me directions, let's say, as I walk every single day, and they'll say to me, oh, can I get in there from here? And they don't realize, people who are, let's say, going to Nag's Head for the summer, that they can't access a lot of that from the main road, from Carrot Oak. So they, I said, no, you have got to come into a side road and get there from behind. So that was, that was done with a foresight of envisioning, we don't want people having to slow down. There's no turn lane or anything. Plus the fact, that's another reason, no turn lane, people slowing down to get into that area is, I, I mean, the potential for.
There is a turn.
Oh, I, I, there is a turn lane, but it's.
And a deceleration.
Right, that's the one at the traffic light, though. Right, exactly. So, but further down, that's a difficulty, too. And the roadway gets just deteriorated from all the traffic and stuff that's on it. So, anyway, I just want, I, I'm very familiar with it. I walk it every single day, and I think that the traffic issue is going to be very problematic.
Mr. Woody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have any control or are we able to influence anything relative to the Moayak Commons Drive?
I mean, I understand they got to bring up the main road into the food line up to DOT standards, but, but good, bad, or indifferent, there is going to be a major traffic going down Moayak Commons Drive.
Now, you, now you, you really don't have a lot of influence over that, sitting in your position tonight, particularly since it's kind of an off-site, we're talking about an off-site improvement that.
Right.
Doesn't relate to this application.
With that, I'll close the public hearing. And are there any further questions for Mr. Woody, Mr. Weatherly, or Mr. Bunnell by the board?
Actually, Mr. Bunnell, question for you. And this may not sit well with other people, but I'm going to ask a question anyways.
Yes, sir.
You notice a picture in one of these diagrams that we have that shows an alternate exit onto Puddin' Ridge Road. Why was that not submitted?
The alternate exit onto Puddin' Ridge Road?
Why was it not submitted?
It was, it was decided early in rezoning not to use, uh, that Avenue E.
Would that not have solved the problem of possibility of safety for school buses and people going through parking lots?
Um, I think that Avenue E is so under capacity, uh, I think that's probably the reason why the improvements required to Avenue E may, that was, uh, handled, uh, by Jim Bradford during the rezoning. I'm thinking that Moayak Commons Drive, because it was a nice wide road and it was signaled that that was determined to be the safest.
It would have given you two avenues of entering and exiting.
Yeah.
Right-of-way and then wide.
It's, it's not, it's, it's a gravel.
A five-feet.
It's a lane.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with so many unknowns and what-ifs, um, I would like to make a motion that we postpone making a motion of decision until we can get with the planning and with legal to craft a proper motion to cover all the bases, regardless if it's a denial or an approval, for a, a minimum of 60 days.
I'll open the floor for a second.
Can I, let me, let me ask a question. So we're, we're currently in negotiation with the Army Corps of Engineers to map this entire region. We all, we're in discussions, correct?
Yeah, but it's not this watershed. It's a, it's a different watershed district.
But they are doing a study.
Yeah, they are doing a study, but.
Army Corps?
Not the district.
The district is doing the study. We all understand that there is serious water issues and drainage issues in Moayak. We've known it forever. May I suggest, um, Ms. Gilbert, that maybe until that study comes back and then we hear this again, pending the results and the recommendations from that study?
I'll, I'll amend my motion until the point in time that we have that study completed and presented to us.
Is, are we able to?
Because we've got to tell you that that study can be done. Completion. I think the end of April.
It'll be completed. We have a meeting with the district April the 25th.
Twenty-eighth, I believe.
Twenty-eighth to present it.
Just around the corner.
April, just around the corner.
So with that amendment, I would like to, to.
Let, let me suggest to you, going, going to your, to your UDO, once you've held your quasi-judicial hearing, you shall do one of the following. Adopt the use permit. Adopt the use permit subject to conditions of approval, denial of the use permit, or remand of the use permit application back to the planning board for further consideration. So among those options, I think maybe I'm hearing the last one.
Remand pending results of the.
That, that, that maybe perhaps you want to remand back to the planning board, uh, for further consideration, which they might then at that time be able to incorporate into another review, uh, this drainage study.
So I'll make that motion to remand it back to the planning, not necessarily the planning board, but because this wouldn't, it wouldn't go back to the planning board. For the consideration of the Army Corps of Engineer?
Well, it'd be, it'd be for further consideration.
What he said.
Whatever that might entail, uh, as it sits back with the planning board.
Mr. McCree, would it be proper for her to remove her initial motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll remove my original motion. Substitute motion.
Right, it'd just be a.
Motion.
Another motion.
Make a motion that we remand this decision back to the planning board for the completion of the Army Corps of Engineers study.
Further consideration.
For further consideration.
Long day.
Say that three times fast and we might get a second.
Oh, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to new business, resolution of intent to consider permanent closure of the remainder of old US Highway 158, SR 1405. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, particularly for you newer members of the board, that there is a statutory provision by which a county board of commissioners may permanently close any street. Upon, uh, during that process, you must first adopt a resolution of preliminary intent setting out that you intend to do this after a public hearing, uh, after the public hearing is advertised for three weeks in advance of the hearing, and after certain findings that you would have to make at the conclusion of the public hearing, among those that any property owner would, would still have access to their property. The consequence of closing a street or road under this statutory provision is that the property owner on each side of the road end up owning that former road or right-of-way to the mid, to the midpoint. This is the first step in the process. We've received a request from Currytuck Waterfront Business Park LLC, which owns property on one side of old US Highway 158, also known as Old Ferry Landing, which is on the south side of the Coin Jock Canal. It's the old road that used to run to the, to the drawbridge. In 1992, DOT actually abandoned 950 feet from the canal, uh, south, uh, from the state-maintained system. And then most recently, last year, DOT Board of Transportation abandoned the remainder of Old Ferry Landing or, uh, old US Highway 158. They've completed their process. They've taken it off the state maintenance system, and now that would allow the county to go forward. If you see that the, the requirements can be met to abandon or close permanently, this particular right-of-way and the adjacent properties would then own to the midpoint. This, uh, resolution will call for a public hearing to be held, um, after three weeks of advertisement. Um, it's your April 20th, April meeting, let's see, April 17th meeting, uh, at which time any, any interested party, including the applicant, of course, will have the opportunity to come forward and be heard at a public hearing.
So the applicant is requesting this? Someone is actually requesting this to happen?
Yes. Yes, property owner that, that owns property adjacent to this right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with a resolution to, to close both sections of Highway 158, SR 1405.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next item, an ordinance of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners amending Chapter 10 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to prohibit aircraft on county beaches. I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, about a month ago, I received.
Can't make this up.
Yeah, about a month ago, I received a telephone call from, from Lieutenant Jason Banks with the Sheriff's Department, asking whether we had an ordinance that prohibited someone from landing their airplane on the north beach, as that had just occurred. We did not have such an ordinance in place prohibiting the, the landing or takeoff of aircraft from the beach. In 2009, this matter came before the Board of Commissioners upon persons expressing concerns about paragliders taking off and landing on the beach. This issue now has come back to the forefront, and so what is proposed tonight, because I'm understanding that there is not the same concern about paragliders as there was at that time, but certainly there is now, because there have been two additional airplanes, I'm told, that have landed on the beach. There's now a, a real concern about fixed wing and rotary wing aircraft landing and taking off from the north beach. So this ordinance would prohibit the landing or takeoff from the beach of a fixed wing or rotary wing aircraft, except in cases of emergency or for the purpose of transporting injured or critically ill patients.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we do, in fact, amend our ordinances to include prohibiting the landing of aircraft on our northern beaches.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on, consideration in action on an ordinance of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners amending Chapter 9, Article 3, Section 9-71 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to provide that emission of certain material into the open air shall constitute a nuisance. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, the county currently has an ordinance known as the Nuisance Ordinance, which lists a number of things that might constitute a nuisance if it rises to a certain level. Some of those things are garbage or trash that's causing such odor in a neighborhood that is, that is deemed to be a nuisance. There has now been expressed a concern that the emission of an excessive amount of dust coming from, from properties onto other property may, may rise to a level such that it should constitute a nuisance, and there should be some way that the county can assist with intervening and trying to rectify or correct such situations. What this ordinance will provide is that the emission of excessive dust into the open air in such a manner that causes injury, detriment, nuisance, or annoyance to another person, or threatens or impairs their health or safety, will be deemed to be a nuisance. Excessive dust, excessive, emission of excessive dust is defined in the ordinance to mean dust that's visible extending beyond the property line of the property from where the dust is emitted. So if someone is doing something on their property, which is creating a significant amount of dust or, or dirt that becomes airborne, and it flows across the property line into an adjacent neighborhood, for example, that might be something that would constitute a nuisance and allow for the county to make an investigation and have some involvement. It's, it's important to understand that just because a nuisance is complained about does not mean that certain activity automatically stops on the piece of property from which the offense is alleged to occur. What, what happens is that the code enforcement officer will then go out, make an investigation, and make a determination as to whether indeed the nuisance meets the, the definitions within our ordinance, and then issues a notice of abatement, requiring the property owner to take steps necessary to cure or prevent any further nuisance activity occurring on their property, and then they are given a period of time in which to rectify that. In the case of someone found to be emitting an excessive amount of dust into the air from their property onto adjacent property, that would give them an opportunity to finish up what they're doing, so there will be no more emission of dust or dirt particles into the air in an excessive amount, or might give them an opportunity or requirement to come up with some kind of plan in order to remediate or keep the dust condition down such that it is not, does not rise to the level of a nuisance condition again. There is an exception in the ordinance that it would not apply to the cultivation of land for crop production, crop irrigation, harvesting, onsite curing, storage, or preparation of crops, or protection of crops from damage or disease conducted in accordance with practices acceptable to the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. So this ordinance is commended to you for your consideration and approval.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the gen item number 1840, amending Chapter 9, Article 3, Section 9-71, Currituck County Code of Ordinances to provide that emission of certain material into open air shall constitute a nuisance.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on, the consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Commissioner's report. Mr. Beaumont?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Etheridge?
Nothing for me this evening.
Mr. White? Mr. Payment?
Nothing for my part.
Ms. Gilbert?
All right, so I'll speak for all of us. April, couple of things. April 1st, at the Judicial Center, we have the hazardous waste, beginning at 9:00 AM, where citizens can bring hazardous waste to be disposed of. We also have the rabies clinic that starts, oh, sorry, at, from 8:00 to 10:00 at the Judicial Center, so participants can bring their pets to be, receive their rabies shot, and that is open to the public. If they have the rabies shots for the non-county residents, it's an $8. It's free for county. And then if you show proof of rabies, you can get a three-year booster. In addition to that, April 1st at Currituck Barbecue, Currituck Kids is having their annual Easter egg hunt. That is open to the public. It is free, and that is for all ages. That's from, begins at 1:00 PM until 3:00 PM. Again, that's at Currituck Barbecue. And then lastly, Ducks Unlimited is having their annual fundraiser on Saturday, this Saturday, from 5:00, beginning at 5:00 PM. There are tickets still available, so if you will contact someone from the Ducks Unlimited, there are tickets still available. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. I have nothing. Mr. Hall?
I'm enjoying myself from the fact of being able to serve the citizens of Currituck. And I come to the realization that the extra duties that are assigned to me as Vice Chairman, I just can't meet with certain other obligations that I have. I'm able to meet my obligations as Commissioner, but I think you better serve, I would step down at this time as Vice Chair, and if someone else can be able to work time, you should develop those extra duties. With that, I have to go ahead and sign up my resignation from the Vice Chair.
Would I entertain a motion for that?
That would be appropriate.
I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the, Mr. Hall's resignation.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. With that, I will entertain a motion for a Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mike Payment for the Vice Chair.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Any other nominations at this point?
Yeah, I mean, I'll accept it if voted in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. With that, I will recess the.
Manager.
Manager, I'm sorry, Mr. Scanlon.
I just want to add an additional comment to Commissioner Gilbert's comment on the hazardous waste collection. Historically, we have collected paint. Paint, though, is not deemed to be a hazardous waste, although it is a difficult product to discharge. We will no longer be collecting paint at the hazardous waste. If you open the can, let it dry out, or you pour sand or pour something in it, then you can dispose of it at our convenience centers, and it can go in the landfill. So I do want to make sure we get the message out that historically, we have accepted it, but on April 1st, they will not be accepting paint.
Mr. Chairman, Hannah, can I get my nickel back?
No. You donated it.
That case. I was approached concerning our oil waste at our transfer stations, our waste stations. I know this came up at least a month ago, where we were changing contractors, but I was under the impression that had already been taken care of. I got an earful last week.
Okay. I'll look back into that.
Yes, sir. There, I don't want my nickel back.
Thank you. With that, I will recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and open a special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board, and hand that over to Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, you have a budget amendment for the Ocean Sands District. We have completed the first phase of a multi-phase project to replace and upgrade the existing wastewater plant in Ocean Sands. You have a budget amendment to appropriate monies for the engineer of that project to go ahead and move forward with the engineering designs and permitting for Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the replacement project. We would like to collapse those into a single project, and you have a budget amendment to appropriate the fund to do that. The funds are available in the construction fund, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Scanlon? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. With that, I will close the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water Sewer District and reopen the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and move for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you all.